Thank you for joining us. I call to order of our regular city council meeting today, September ninth, twenty twenty five at seven oh five P M. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Adler.
Here.
Councilmember Joinat.
Present.
Councilmember Rubio.
Here.
Vice Mayor Veros.
Here.
And Mayor Armstrong is absent this evening.
Next item, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Item three, announcements, three point one, changes and additions to the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes this evening.
Good, thank you. Item three point two, if you wish to speak, speak under public comment or regarding an agenda item, please fill out a speaker card. That is available back there is a green card of located in the back of the room and submit it to the city clerk. Okay, item four will open the public comment. At this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on any non-agenda item relating to the business of the city council. Items that are on the consent calendar, including requests to pull an item from the consent calendar. And the reason why you wish to pull the item or items. Please note that the decision to remove the item from the consent calendar is strictly at the discretion of the city council. Request for the future agenda items. Special presentation items under section six of tonight's agenda. Items that are not on the agenda and are within the city council's jurisdiction. Please be reminded that while the city ensures the first amendment rights of its citizens. We do not accept nor endorse any offensive or hateful comments made during our meetings. The city celebrates the diversity of our community and we strive to be a welcoming and open community for all. If you wish to speak under public comment or regarding an agenda from agenda item, please fill out a speaker card located in the back of the room and submit it to the city clerk. While we encourage your comments. Unfortunately, state law prevents the city council from discussing items that are not on the meeting agenda. The city council does take them very seriously. However, if appropriate, staff will follow up. Item five, consent calendar.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Veros, we do have public comment on item four.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I open the public comment now.
Uh, the first speaker, Bob Peoples.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Bob Peoples, Chair of your Open Space Advisory Committee. Unfortunately, and with regret, I'm here this evening to inform you and the community of the arbitrary cancellation of meetings that impede the committee's efforts to achieve its goals. Uh, staff assert that there are no pressing issues the committee has to address as the basis for not scheduling and planning for our regular monthly meeting uh on Monday. Uh, this would be the fourth such cancellation uh this year, including in July and August. Uh, these cancellations substantially increase the difficulty uh of the the committee completing uh its twenty twenty five work program presented to you uh as part of our annual report in February. Among other issues remaining for twenty twenty five, uh we need to assess the protection status of open space and and green space important to the city. We're we're involved in maintaining and expanding connections and partnerships with a variety of entities, including East Bay Parks, essential for maintaining uh open space and contiguous to the city and in responding to uh requirements established by general city policy and statutory mandates. Clearly, the there are important and pressing issues and tasks that the committee com- committee must address uh for the on the remainder of this year. These efforts need time uh for the committee discussion and deliberation and must be undertaken in a transparent manner uh during a public forum as required by the Brown Act and uh to enhance public understanding and uh buy in to to some of the issues we're dealing with. I urge you to insist that next Monday's meeting proceed so the committee is able to fulfill its responsibilities and achieve its goals. Uh, thank you for your attention this evening.
Thank you. Any next speaker?
Jim Blickenstaff.
Uh, good evening, council members. Uh, just a quick thing I'd like to take care of under public comments. Um, it's a consent calendar items five twelve and five thirteen. I'd like to have them removed for a little more discussion on them. And uh, the the main reason is there are two issues that come up. One is a financial risk that may be going to the city at some point that you should be aware of of that factor. And then the other one is affordable housing compliance. And if uh that is delayed, the arena numbers take effect, the state's getting very strict about affordable housing. And uh, we could have a a problem with that under some of the things that I see under five twelve. So um, if that can be removed and maybe discuss a little bit under seven, uh, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And next speaker?
Sharag Kathrani.
Dear Vice Mayor and the council member, and thanks, uh, Councilmember Joinat for speaking up last time in the last meeting where you abstained from the five twelve and five thirteen item. Especially when the question was being raised about the public oversight being taken away. There are sixty plus people who have written to the city council. And it should be brought for a further discussion as well. One of the few things that I believe the city council did not do, one is thing is like you need to encourage residents to raise their voices, whereas number of people have written and it was just ignored. And this removes the trust from the council. And there were no given example where the zoning administrator could have done better job. Whereas Planning Commission has delayed any kind of project. So the streamlining process doesn't make any sense if there is no example given in place. And uh, one more point which uh Mayor Armstrong mentioned is like it's a typical standard in San Ramon that zoning administrator does it, but I do not see any example where the things did not come to Planning Commission as well. And removing public oversight is not the right thing to do. Of of course, we have zone zoning administrator meetings as well, but they are afternoon and they are hardly accessible to most of the residents. One additional point which I want to do is like the play, the projects in that particular five thirteen are not even there are, they're they're not even given in place. So why should we remove the planning commission oversight in this particular case? One uh item which I really wanted to bring up as well, council member Rubio mentioned that there is an option to appeal. I want to remind there were multiple times people have come here and spoken and asked for having the appeal fee in a reasonable range. Entire Bay Area, there is three hundred kind of average rate of three hundred dollar for appeal. Whereas here it is four thousand five hundred. Our council should have sworn in to serve the people of San Ramon, not the Sunset Development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Santarsh Kanjula.
Good evening, Vice Chair Veros and Councilmembers Rubio, Ren and Adler. I am here to talk about the Carmelita Community Beautifications and Ventures topic. Um, I want to remind, give a little bit of background. Uh, I came in earlier and city staff was very helpful. And uh, last month Shane, who is one of the city staff, has come visited the site and uh looked at the land that is currently under GAD purview. And uh, he has also looked at some of the dimensions that could be feasible, that could be for easement. So uh, I want to request this council, which is also the GAD council, to take this up as an agenda item to consider the easement at the entrance of the Carmelita community. And if there is any future meeting or if you guys uh decide to have a meeting, kindly take up this point as an agenda item for GAD. And of course, the city staff will also be looking at their report uh preparing their report for you guys. So I've been here multiple times and I thank you for your time and patience listening through this. But um, I would appreciate your help and setting up this point as an agenda item for the GAD meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to see you, uh, Vice Mayor Veros, today leading the meeting.
Thank you.
Alexandra Armandarias Del Favero.
Councilmembers, my name is Alexandra Armandaries Del Favero. I am a San Ramon resident, a domestic violence survivor, a mother of disabled children, and currently a federal whistleblower in environmental crimes. I am here to urge you to reject ordinance five thirty two. Today, you are deciding whether to eliminate the planning commission's public oversight. I am here to show you the real world consequences when oversight fails and corporations operate in darkness. My story, what happens without oversight. At Canyon Village Circle, I am witness and doc- I have witnessed and documented a systemic criminal enterprise. Professional mold inspection reports showing one thousand two hundred ninety-three Aspergillus penicillium spores per cubic meter, highly elevated and dangerous. Black mold found in furnace closet, two thousand square feet of drywall requiring removal due to contamination. Fire hazards from water damage to electrical systems. Unlicensed contractor violations, CFI group performing mold remediation with no proper licensing. Expired licenses, license nine eight seven six zero four expired. No hazardous material certification required by law. Stop order building two zero two five dash two seven five six violated by continued illegal work. Criminal conspiracy documented. Video evidence of criminal trespass and evidence tampering. Corporate supervisor overseeing cover-up operation, systemic retaliation against reporting residents. The connection to ordinance five thirty two. This is exactly what happens when public oversight is removed. Without planning commission review, residents never learn about dangerous conditions. Corporate crimes go undetected. Public safety becomes secondary to profits. Environmental hazards are concealed from communities. The pattern of concealment. Four hundred plus units potentially affected by identical violations. Previous tenants evicted from my exact unit address after legal disputes. Corporate coordination to silence residents. Municipal code enforcement failing to protect public safety. Why we must keep planning commission oversight? The planning commission serves as the essential check and balance between corporate interests and public safety. Here's why the oversight is absolutely critical. Public transparency requirements. Open meetings where residents can speak and ask questions. Document disclosure that reveals environmental conditions. Professional review of safety standards and code compliance. Public record creation that prevents corporate cover-ups. Environmental protection. Mandatory environmental impact assessments for developments. Public disclosure of of contamination and remediation plans. Independent oversight of contractor licensing and qualifications. Resident notification of hazardous conditions affecting their health. Accountability mechanisms. Public questioning of developers and their.
Please wrap up your comment, please.
Professional review of independent commissioners, dependent documentation requirements that create legal accountability. Appeal processes as accessible to residents. When you remove this oversight for any developer, especially one with documented violations, you eliminate the only democratic process that protects residents from corporate abuse. Councilmembers, the Canyon Village Circle situation requires immediate intervention.
Please.
The in the immediate actions that I'm requesting are emergency habitability inspection of the Canyon Village buildings. Stop work orders for all unlicensed contractors activities. Independent environmental testing at property owner's expense. Resident notification of.
Please wrap up your comment.
I am almost done. Professional remediation by property licensed contractors only, planning commission.
We'll give another five seconds.
Okay, the beautification project and safety integration. When discussing Canyon Village Apartments beautification projects, we must address the underlying infrastructure failures first. Environmental remediation must.
Yeah.
Cosmetic improvements.
Please, uh, we cannot have this meeting continue.
I, do you have to be this close for me, to me?
I'm not that close, but I need you to step away from the podium.
You're within.
Your, your time is up.
Okay.
The comment, so we need to please.
So I'm requesting that this be put on the agenda.
Thank you.
That was the last public speaker card, but I do like to note that there were one written comment for item five point twelve on the consent calendar and fifty-seven comments for item five point thirteen on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, uh, at this point, it is up to the council. Uh, so you want to go for moving the motion or you want on the consent calendar or?
I'd like to pull item five point one three.
Okay, uh.
I think that would be reasonable. Um, do you want to bring it back?
I want to bring it back from under section.
At another meeting and.
No, I want to bring it back under, under, today, under item seven. I'm sorry, item seven, uh. Items, yeah, uh, item seven, yeah.
Okay, so anybody want to entertain motion excluding that?
Um, so do, councilmembers, do you have anything to add?
I I will not go cheer to that.
Alrighty, so um, let's make a motion then to approve the consent calendar while uh we're going to pull five point one three for further discussion and consideration.
I I shall move, I move five point one three, I move to, um.
Second.
Yeah, approve the consent calendar minus section five point one three and flip five point one three, item seven of the agenda today.
So, Councilmember Joinat, uh, Councilmember Rubio moved, moved the motion, okay, and then Councilmember Joinat, who moved?
I moved.
He moved.
The Vice Mayor, um, we do need to uh read ordinance number five thirty by title only.
Okay, so you need to.
As that's a part of item five twelve.
So you need me to repeat that?
No, 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 we just need the ordinance to be read out loud either by the Vice Mayor or the City Clerk.
Okay, I I can.
The title.
Read out. So it's five, item five point one three, ordinance five three one, adopting amendment.
Item, Vice Mayor Veros, I'm sorry, item five twelve, ordinance five thirty.
Oh, I'm sorry, just to make sure, five point.
Five point one three, it was five.
Five point one three.
It's five point one three that.
About Joinat's pulling.
Ordinance five thirty two.
Five thirty one and five thirty two, right?
Correct. So he's pulling item five thirteen or five twelve?
Five thirteen. Five thirteen.
So. So I'm sorry, Councilmember Joinat, you're pulling item five thirteen or five twelve?
Five thirteen.
Okay, so ordinance five thirty needs to be read for the motion for items one, five point one through five point twelve. So ordinance five thirty for item five twelve needs to be read by title only? And I can do that?
Yeah, please go.
Thank you. Ordinance five thirty approving the development agreement by and between the city of San Ramon and Sunset Development Company relative to the development known as the Bishop Ranch Affordable Housing Site, Bishop Ranch Affordable Housing Site Development Agreement.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, please vote yes or no or abstain. Go down, Lewis. Okay, uh, consent calendar item is approved with removal of five thirteen and with both yes four, no zero. Thank you. So with that, we'll go to item six, special presentations. Item six point one, proclamation declaring September seventeen to twenty third, twenty twenty five as Constitution Week. Presented to Jill Zel- Zelinger, Regent, I'm sorry to butcher your last name. Uh, Regent and Sue D. Lou, Chair at National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution.
Thank you so much, City Council. I'm so glad to hear someone can't pronounce my name because the names I have to read at times, I go, oh my. So Dollinger, just like Bollinger, just take the B off, add a Z.
Yeah.
Simple, simple.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Um, thank you so much for for um honoring us with uh doing the Constitution Week proclamation. The society, National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution was founded in eighteen ninety and is headquartered in Washington, D.C. It's a federally chartered lineage-based membership service organization for women who directly descend from a patriot that helped support the American Revolution. Over the last hundred and thirty-five years, it has been dedicated to historic preservation, education, and patriotism. Each year, we urge all Americans to reflect on the U.S. Constitution. There are two documents of paramount importance of the American history. The Declaration of Independence, which forged our nation's identity, and the United States Constitution, which set forth the framework of the federal government that functions to this day. That said, many people do not know about Constitution Week, an annual commemoration of a living document that upholds and protects the freedom essentials to the American way of life. That is why the D A R is committed to spreading the word. In San Ramon and other communities across America, we will erect hundreds of community displays, including the one if you, I hope you all go see at the San Ramon Library. And the librarians have been so wonderful for our group, so thank you to them as well. Um, it will also provide copies of the Constitution to the students, uh, high school student civic classes and run, run a poster contest to raise awareness of different Constitution tenants and importance. We invite everyone to join us in celebrating Constitution Week, starting today with the city of San Ramon's proclamation and hope that all Americans will learn more about the Constitution and its immense impact to our nation. On behalf of the Jose Maria Amador chapter and the National Society of Da- Daughters of the American Revolution, I thank you for supporting us. And I also have a gift for the council as well. It's a copy of the winning poster from this last year. So I want to thank you for supporting us each and every year. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get to the proclamation, please give a minute.
Oh, yeah.
I remember we.
One last year, the posters from a fifth to eighth grade.
Very beautiful.
Okay, wonderful. Yes, absolutely.
A proclamation of the city council of the city of San Ramon designated in Sept- September seventeen to twenty third, twenty twenty five as Constitution Week. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September seventeen, twenty twenty five marks the two hundred thirty-eight anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of United States of America by Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation and the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law nine one five guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designation September seventeen through September, September twenty third as Constitution Week. And whereas the California State Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, enriches communities by protecting and preserving historic locations, fostering patriotism and love of country, supporting education, sustaining charitable endeavors and assisting veterans and inform and encouraging all to do historical research. And whereas the National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution. And whereas the National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution, NSDAR, is a non-political organization that supports its San Ramon libraries, schools, and civic organizations in reaching, in teaching all citizens, especially youth and newly naturalized citizens about our founding documents. The NSDAR sets up library displays, provide copies of Constitution to high school civic classes and runs an annual Constitution Week poster contest to raise awareness and inspire our citizens. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of San Ramon does hereby proclaim the week of September seventeen through September twenty third, twenty twenty five in the City of San Ramon as Constitution Week. We urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. Thank you very much. Yeah, is there any additional speakers or?
Do you want the council come?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Mayor Sullivan both forever have come to our student board meeting, so.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think we need to hold for one more so the city photographer can get up there and take a picture.
Well, at this time, uh, council members, any comments?
Congratulations, ladies. Yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much for all your work in preserving our Constitution. Thank you. Okay, with that, we go to the next item. Proclamation declaring August thirty-one, twenty twenty five as International Overdose Awareness Day, presented to Scott Herbert, National Coalition Against Prescription Drug Abuse.
First, uh, proclamation.
You're gonna come down early with this one?
Yes.
Love it. Do you want me to say my spiel or do you want to do yours first?
Oh, first let me do the proclamation.
Okay, that's fine.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Wait, come on up. You're getting this as much as I am.
Uh, great to see you all. Pretty familiar faces. A proclamation of the City Council of the City of San Ramon declaring August thirty-one, twenty twenty five as International Overdose Awareness Day. Whereas the City of San Ramon does affirm and acknowledge the harm and impact surrounding drug overdose. And whereas we recognize that the purpose of International Overdose Awareness Day is to eliminate the stigma associated with overdose. Remember loved ones who have died from drug overdose and support those they fly, they left behind. And whereas we resolve to play our part in reducing the toll of overdose in our local communities that forever affects those who loved and cared about them. And whereas we acknowledge that the people affected by overdose are our family members, friends, coworkers, and neighbors and are deserving of our remembrance, love, compassion, and support. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the San, City of San Ramon, along with the National Coalition Against Prescription Drug Abuse, the Contra Costa County Meds Coalition and other community partners do hereby recognize August thirty-first, twenty twenty five as International Overdose Awareness Day. Thank you very much. Picture, when you can see. Oh, you go ahead, your, your speech.
I was gonna say, thank you for doing that. It is nice to see all the faces. They're gonna speak. I probably should let them do all the speaking. Um, but I was asked by April Rivero to do my part first because theirs is more important. So, uh, good evening, Vice Mayor, council members, staff, and the general public. My name is Scott Gerbert and I am a founding member of the National Coalition Against Prescription Drug Abuse, based here in San Ramon. On behalf of the NCA PDA, I want to thank you for recognizing International Overdose Awareness Day, a global event meant to remember those lost too soon to overdose, to support those they left behind, and to break down the stigma that can have a profound, multiple factor impact on those affected by substance use disorder. To put overdose as a national public crisis in perspective, in twenty twenty-three, there were over a hundred and five thousand overdose deaths in the United States, an average of two hundred and eighty-eight Americans each day. Since January twenty twenty-three, there have been fifty-eight EMS responses to suspected overdoses in San Ramon alone, and twenty times during those responses naloxone was administered for what was assumed to be an opioid-related overdose. Tragically, there were two fatalities among those EMS responded to in San Ramon. Thankfully, there is some good news. To report at the national level, between October twenty twenty-three and September twenty twenty-four, there was a twenty-four percent decline in fatal overdoses from the year before. That is a huge decrease nationally. The factors are cited uh, by this decrease. Uh, community education, particularly around fentanyl, treatment for substance use disorder, and the distribution of naloxone that can be used by anyone to reverse an opioid-related overdose. The NCA PDA works continuously in our local communities throughout the Tri-Valley to save lives through our educational programs, overdose rescue training, and distribution of naloxone rescue kits and fentanyl test strips. We encourage you to visit our website at www.ncapda.org to request overdose rescue training, either virtually or in person, and to obtain our free naloxone and fentanyl test strips. In closing, I want to say to those who have lost over, uh, who we have lost to overdose, you mattered. Their families and friends left behind also matter. We need to make sure that stigma does not get in the way of us embracing and supporting them through their loss and grief. Again, thank you very much for your proclamation, recognizing International Overdose Awareness Day. It's a very important day that means a lot to those of us at NCA PD and to everyone in San Ramon community who has been touched in some way by a devastating loss due to overdose. So I'm gonna ask Shreya to come up and speak next.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Veros, uh, council members and staff. Uh, my name is Shreya Sharma and I am a senior at California High School. I have been with the NCA PDA for around four years now and I am a youth ambassador. Building on Scott's remarks, as a youth ambassador, I've seen firsthand how the NCA PDA addresses the challenges presented by prescription medication abuse and supports our community. They regularly table at schools and community events like our Arden Wind Festival, providing lifesaving resources like Narcan, educational materials, and information on treatment programs. Only a few years ago, so many of the people we met tabling were hesitant to pick up Narcan, not because they didn't care, but because they feared being judged or associated with drugs. Not, the NCA PDA directly addresses this stigma by creating safe spaces for learning, asking questions, and accessing help. Nowadays, people approach our booths for Narcan. Furthermore, I've also seen students and community members become more willing to engage in conversation about substance use and to support friends or family in seeking treatment. Just two days ago, I was with the NCA PDA at a community health fair in Oakland and I met so many people who were striving to improve their own lives and the lives of their community by organizing trainings and naloxone in their schools. The NCA PDA's initiatives make our community safer, more compassionate, and better equipped to prevent overdoses and support recovery. Honoring this day is not only about remembering lives lost, but also about reinforcing the importance of continuing these efforts in our communities. And for your continued support, I thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Sabrina Tarek. I am a junior at Mona Vista and I am a youth ambassador representing NCA PDA. International Overdose Awareness Day is a day of remembrance for those whose lives have been cut short by overdose. It's also a day to support the families, friends, and communities who have lost someone they love. But it's more than just remembering. It's about breaking down the stigma around overdose and drug use by being open and talking about it. When people feel like they can't talk about these issues, it makes it harder for others to get the help they need. This day matters to me because I've seen how addiction and overdose can ripple through a community and affect so many lives, even if you don't expect it. It's a reminder that behind every statistic is a real person and behind every person is someone who loved them. Through my work with NCA PDA, I've been part of giving out naloxone kits, learning how to use them, and helping to train others. I've talked with, I've talked with friends and classmates about the dangers of fentanyl and prescription drug misuse. I've learned that even small actions like sharing information or teaching someone how to save a life can make a very big difference. Today is a reminder that we all have a role in preventing overdoses and supporting those who have been affected. I'm grateful to be here to honor the lives lost, to stand with those who are grieving, and to be part of the effort to keep our community safe. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Danushiana Diprikash and I'm currently a senior at California High School. I've been a youth ambassador with NCA PDA since my freshman year and through this role, I've worked to break down the stigma around overdose and drug use. International Overdose Awareness Day is personal to me because overdose has touched people's lives and touched people I know and care about. And unfortunately, it's not a distant issue in the future, but a crisis right here in front of our communities. Last year alone, over a hundred thousand people in the US lost their lives to drug overdoses. That's equivalent for an entire stadium of young people, parents, neighbors, and friends gone in a single year. Fentanyl in particular is the leading cause of death for Americans aged eighteen to forty-five. International Overdose Awareness Day is not just about remembering those lives, but through remembrance is essential. It's also a chance to confront the reality that behind every statistic is a family forever changed. It reminds us that prevention, education, and compassion can save lives. As young people, as a young person, I feel a great responsibility to speak out and raise awareness. Thank you for supporting this cause and valuing the voices of youth who want to be part of building a safer and healthier community.
Thank you. So that, uh, council, would you like to make some comments on that? We can start with all you want.
Whoever, whoever.
Go ahead. Council member.
Yeah, I was, I'm very impressed and glad that you are here to remind us of this very important challenge, ongoing challenge we have and uh, you know, the comment that you made that um, behind every statistic is a real person really got to me and uh, Scott, it's great to see you. Scott is such an important member of our community and uh, and uh, I'm glad to see him here. We've seen April Rivero in the past as well. And uh, and you know, it, it's something that we can't forget because um, these, these deaths are continuing to happen, maybe not at the same rate. But we have more to do to prevent that and I'm glad that we have the uh, the uh, antidote that's available. I know April has been really behind that and getting that in the high schools and the, in the colleges so that they're available. And of course, her son died, uh, I believe at Arizona State quite a few years ago, but you, you'll never forget something that tragic. And she made it into a real positive thing by, by bringing attention to all of us here. So anyway, I just want to thank you uh, for being here and uh, you know, if there's any, if you want to let us know in the future of any fundraisers going on, I know we've, we've done it at a local restaurant uh, over the last few years. So if anything's going on, please bring it to our attention because we'd like to help. Thank you.
Council member Johnny.
Thank you. I must say to the youth here, you guys are very eloquent. Speak very well. You should be proud of yourselves. It's not easy to come up for council in public on a camera to do that. That's, that's a life learning skill. But I wanted to mention also that I think one of the ladies mentioned a hundred thousand deaths last year. I mean, that is staggering, but I the fact that you all care enough to put your time and effort in. If one life is saved, then that one life changes another life, that life changes another life. So that is, that is just really great work and I've, I, I have reached out. I'm, I'm on the mailing list when uh, the lady that was here before, I forgot her name. April, thank you. When April was here and presented, so uh, I, anybody hasn't had that Narcan uh, test kit, please put it, put it in your car. You, you never know if you just save that one life and could make a world of difference. So thank you and keep doing the work and as, as Councilmember Adler mentioned, if there's anything we could do, please reach out to us. We'd, we'd love to help. Thank you all.
Council member Rubio.
Thank you. So first and foremost, thank you uh, for being here, coming here and each of you sharing your, your story and your experience in this journey. What you're, what you are fighting for is to save lives every day and you are in fact doing that and I hope, I hope you know that deep down in your heart, you truly are doing that. Most people uh, forget that, you know, these types of addictions, especially of prescription drugs, there's no racial, ethnic, socioeconomic profile. It could happen at any time in your life. I've seen it happen with seniors even. And people think it's just something that young people go through and it's not. So um, I just want to, you know, thank you profoundly for the work you're doing every day, Steve. Um, thank you, Scott, excuse me, I was looking at the next one. Scott, thank you so much for mentoring these young people and making sure that the next generation is empowered with information in advance. That is so important because, you know, it's very easy to get a prescription. Um, but sometimes we're, our guard isn't up and we're not prepared and we don't know how to deal with that. So I just want to thank you and, and echo what has been said. If there's any way we can help and support you, please. We're just a phone call or an email away. Thank you for everything.
Scott, Shreya, Sabrina, Tanisha, Tanisha, thank you. Thank you very much for your leadership and volunteer ism and also special thanks to April for all her leadership in making sure that you bring this awareness in our community. The numbers, the decline in numbers definitely shows the work that you are doing and how that is impacting within our community. As our previous council member Scott Perkins used to say that the lives that you save, we don't see them. Right? So thanks for bringing all this awareness on drug abuse, prescription drug abuse and the impacts and helping our community you to stay safe and healthy. Thanks. Big applause. Okay, with that, we are going to item six point three, proclamation declaring September twenty twenty-five as National Senior Center Month. Going to be presented by council member Rubio. Oh, and introduction by Steve Cox, Recreation Supervisor.
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor Veros and fellow council members. I could have you gone first too, so uh, okay. Uh, my name is Steve Cox. I am the Staff Supervisor of the San Ramon Alcosta Senior and Community Center. I'm also the advisor to the Senior Advisory Committee. Uh, the celebration of National Senior Center Month helps bring awareness to San Ramon's healthy, aging-friendly programs and highlights the vital role a senior senator can play in enhancing the quality of life for older adults in San Ramon. I'm happy to here to have this evening and to introduce Udaya Rajbandari, uh, who is the current Chair of the Senior Advisory Committee and who will receive the National Senior Center Month proclamation. Right, yep.
Thank you. So this is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of San Ramon proclaiming September 2025 as National Senior Center Month. Whereas National Senior Center Month is about recognizing older Americans as significant members of our society, investing their wisdom and experience to help enrich and strengthen the San Ramon community. And whereas the Alcosta Senior Center and Community Center has acted as an age-friendly environment by fostering human development and cultural unity through promoting creativity, accessibility, vitality, inclusivity, and support for older adults in San Ramon. And whereas through the wide array of services, programs, special events, and activities, the Alcosta Senior Center and Community Center empowers older San Ramon citizens to contribute to their physical and mental health and wellness. And whereas the Alcosta Senior and Community Center offers essential programs, services, and positive spaces, including lectures and workshops, exercise and dance classes, card and title games, table tennis, art classes, bingo, and weekday lunches to create a healthy and engaging environment for older adults in San Ramon. And whereas in 2024, the Alcosta Senior and Community Center served over 8,465 senior meals, provided transportation to and from the center to 2,738 older adults, and over 22,323 older adults participated in fitness and enrichment classes. And whereas the Alcosta Senior and Community Center will remain an age-friendly place for San Ramon's older citizens to continue thriving, staying connected, safe, engaged, and healthy. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of San Ramon does hereby proclaim September 2025 as National Senior Center Month and urges all citizens to visit and celebrate the wide array of essential age-friendly recreational experiences offered at the Alcosta Senior Center, Senior and Community Center. Thank you. Of course, thank you. Okay. You can come back. If you want to. Come, come, come. We'll take one more. Scott, we need you one more time. I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you so much again. Feel free to sing.
Good evening, honorable Vice Mayor, council members, and members of our community. On behalf of Senior Advisory Committee, I'm deeply honored to accept this proclamation declaring September 2025 as National Senior Center Month. This recognition is more than a date. It is a celebration of vital role Alcosta Senior Center plays in our community. It is not just gathering place, but lifeline that provides communication and opportunities for older adults to stay engaged, active, and valued. This proclamation also recognizes tremendous contribution of our senior population while ensuring today's and tomorrow's seniors can age with joy, respect, and dignity. On behalf of the committee, I would like to invite you all to join for various activities and events held throughout September. Also, please complete and return the senior needs assessment survey. You can go online and fill it out as well. Your feedback will help us better understand priorities, challenges, and opportunities for our senior community. As a chairperson, I request our community to get involved. Please volunteer for the Senior Center Advisory Committee. We currently have a vacant position. If you have a passion for serving and want to help shape programs and policy, we encourage you to apply. Your voice matters. On behalf of the committee and the seniors we represent, thank you for your proclamation and continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any comments? Let's start with Councilmember.
Yeah, I'm glad you're here. I'm glad we're recognizing the seniors. As you know, I was chair not too long ago, and I've worked with Steve, you know, during that time. And Steve is a man of many functions in the city, wears many hats, and this is just one of them, but it's an important one. And Udaya, congratulations on being chair. And I don't know what you're up to, but if you guys are doing another one of those scarecrows, I'll help you with that. But anyway, yeah, thanks very much. We are very fortunate to have the Alcosta Senior Center at such an important place for seniors who, as you know, I mean, a lot of seniors, you know, go through challenges, just like we all do at different times of our lives. And it's good to have a central location for seniors to meet and have social contact and have lunch. And also you go on day trips and things like that. So there's a lot of things. So seniors, if you're not involved, check out our Alcosta Senior Center. But thanks for being here.
Congratulations, Stephen. Udaya, I attend. I'm on the Senior Advisory Committee, so and thank you for all your continued support. If you haven't, if you have a loved one that needs a place to go, the Senior, the Alcosta Senior Center is really a wonderful place to be. And thank you to you both. It's a clean, welcoming environment, something that I've been to other senior centers. And this one, not because I'm from San Ramon, but this one really takes the cake. So thank you for everything that you do and make a difference. Thank you.
So I just want to say thank you for everything that you do. I mean, having, you know, sitting on the Senior Foundation as well as the Advisory Committee as an alternate. I just can, I have seen the work you do, and you are one of the best, most organized committees I have ever seen. I mean, you run a tight ship. You are so attentive to detail. And the budget that you maintain is to be envied, honestly. You do a remarkable job. And all the things that you are undertaking in really the enrichment, physical, mental, emotional, in every dimension, in the quality of life to our seniors who unfortunately, as we've seen on occasions in other places, what can happen, and they can be forgotten. And especially like when we talk about these high-temperature days that we've been having. And, you know, oftentimes, those are some of the most vulnerable communities out there who may not be able to really realize that they're in danger at the moment. So thank you for everything that you do. We appreciate you and just for bringing compassion and humanity front and center here in San Ramon.
I go with our fellow council members. Thank you for all your services, especially the leadership that senior community shows us in delivering the services to our seniors is amazing. And also staff, you did fantastic job. As you know, San Ramon is well-known for multi-generational families. And a lot of these seniors, they are looking ways so that they can get together as a social network. Also, they want to take care of their health. And recently, the biggest problem that they are facing is the technology, the scams that they are facing through, right? So I'm very glad that our teen council, working with them and making sure that they are safe with the cyber attacks. And I'm glad that our seniors also happy to work with our teens and learning that. This is like a lifelong learning that they are doing is a great achievement that we can see in our community. So once again, thank you to our Senior Advisory Committee as well as to our staff for doing this fantastic job. Thanks. Okay, with that, we go to our item seven, deferred consent items. So let's start with the each pulled item. So that one, five.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Yeah. So the ordinances that are before you tonight are related to the CityWalk master plan and their amendments to existing development agreements that are already in place. The provisions of these amendments relate to allowing for the transfer of affordable housing units to projects that are outside the boundaries of the CityWalk master plan. And there's several different configurations that can be accommodated through the development agreement. The second item is related to permit streamlining and Program 22, the housing element. And it allows for ZA approval of future housing projects within these two neighborhoods of the master plan. That's the Bishop Ranch 1A and 3A. On the 12th of August, we had a substantial discussion about the Bishop Ranch Affordable Housing Receiver Site as well as the terms of this particular development agreement. I just wanted to mention that the authority for development plan approvals already lies with the zoning administrator. But it's just an effort to formalize an acknowledgement of Housing Element Program 22 as part of this. So I'm available for any questions.
Okay, before I open for public comment, any questions?
I just have some.
Councilmember John.
Yeah, I just have some thoughts. And I prepared my notes, and I wanted to thank the public for submitting their public comment. I did read through them. I did. And I prepared factual points. But I want folks, all sides, to keep an open mind and just listen for a moment, just for a moment, listen. And let's, and then we'll take public comment, and we'll hear from other council members as well. I want to point out that some of the comments here are from the public are they're emotional, they're charged, and I get it. But let me begin by saying that oversight is not eliminated. The ordinance 532 does not abolish planning commission or city council oversight. The zoning administrator has authority to decide development plan amendments under San Ramon Municipal Code D623C. I promise you, in this conversation, I'm going to cite to rule of law, chapter and verse in the municipal code. You guys could take what you want from that. Development plan and amendments, decision by the zoning administrator is appealable. The zoning administrator may defer action and refer the request to the planning commission. Every zoning administrative decision is appealable to the planning commission city council, and either body can call up a case directly. So inherently, what that means is if there's a member of the public that disagrees with a decision by the zoning administrator, they can call up a city council member, call up a planning commissioner, and make their case heard to appeal that decision. The zoning administrative authority is a longstanding view. It's not new. The zoning administrative authority over development plans and amendments has been in the zoning code in San Ramon for many, many years, even going before 2020. Ordinance 532 clarifies and applies this existing authority to the CityWalk development agreement. It does not create new powers, nor does it create additional powers. The appeals do exist, and the right to appeal remains intact, whether with zoning authority or without zoning authority. Regardless of costs, the council can review, and so can planning commission. There was a point here in the argument that Measure G would be repealed, that is factually incorrect. Several comments wrongly link ordinance 532 to Measure G. In fact, Measure G is a voter-approved initiative protecting hillsides and open space. It cannot be repealed or amended by council action. Only the voters can change it. Ordinance 532 deals solely with administrative procedures for CityWalk approvals. And state housing law mandates this. Like laws SB 35, AB 2011, and the Housing Accountability Act requires cities to streamline approvals for qualifying housing projects that meet objective standards. Public hearings cannot be used to delay such projects. This is state law, and it's not a local choice. Ordinance 532 ensures San Ramon stays in compliance and avoids lawsuits or state intervention. There's also an argument that this was favoritism for one side or the other. Development agreements are standard tool under government code, California Government Code 65864, for managing large-scale, long-term projects. And the CityWalk is the largest entitlement in San Ramon, so it uses this framework. Other developers of similar scale could pursue the same process. Oversight appeals apply equally, not just to one developer. It's not a special privilege. This is a project-specific, not city-wide. Ordinance 532 applies only to Sunset CityWalk entitlements. Any future citywide change would require new ordinance, secret review, planning commission, and city council approval, and compliance with the general plan. There is no spillover. The transparency remains, and I'd argue that there is another layer of transparency with the zoning administrator. Agendas and staff reports are published days in advance. Public comments are accepted in writing and at meetings. While some items are heard late in long meetings, this is due to agenda length and testimony. There wasn't any subterfuge or special timing to height decisions. Written comments are always made part of the record, and they're always read and carefully followed. So why amend now if the ZA has been, zoning administrator has done this for years? The update really formalizes existing practice under CityWalk agreement and aligns it with state housing law without an amendment. The city does risk inconsistencies and potential legal exposure. Those are my thoughts, Vice Mayor. Just wanted to share that with the public, but I'll leave it to, and thank you for allowing me to talk.
Next, Councilmember Rubio.
Yeah, so just a comment really. I also echo what Councilmember Joinet has mentioned. There's, we're never completely absolving any, all oversight. That is just not the case. There's also, I think, bills that are on the horizon that will come into effect that have actually already passed in the legislature, like AB 130 and SB 131, which will further streamline housing development. And I think sometimes people are being given misinformation, whether intentional or not, I don't know, but they are, about the fact that we have to abide by state law. Just as much as we have to abide by stopping at a red light, we have to abide by state law. We cannot tell the state, we don't agree with you, we're not going to do what you want. The moment we do that, we put the city at risk of being sued. And the cost for being sued is very high, something that I think all of our residents would be very upset that we're spending their money and down the drain. So we have a responsibility to follow the law. And some people like to rewrite the law to make political campaigns, and that is not okay. They are telling fallacies to the community, and I find that extremely disgraceful. And that is not leadership. As leaders, our number-one priority is to be transparent and honest with our community. And the moment you violate that, you've lost the trust of the public. So with that said, I did want to make one minor edit suggestion, if that's possible. Um, on the section 6.1, there's, um, there's a part where it says, let's see, let's see. Contingent parking obligations.
Vice Mayor Barros, if I may, through the Vice Mayor. Just remind the council that this is a second reading, and if we are to do any amendments, we would have to have a first reading all over again and then bring this back to a future council meeting.
Oh, the only thing I wanted to clarify was one word. It's just that it says, I'm trying to find it right now. Hold on a second. It's the contingent parking obligations where it says, "may enter into a parking agreement with the office complex at BR 15." I just worry that the word "may" gives it like, it's not clear that if needed, those park, the commitment is, has already been made, that those additional parking will be provided. Does that make a difference? Do you understand what I'm saying there? Because when you say "may" means like maybe, if they want to, if they can, and that worries me. I just want to make sure that those agreements are very clear, that that agreement was clearly stipulated.
Now, I think Lauren may have additional clarification, but if I can recall correctly from that meeting, they committed to find additional parking and not necessarily restrict to one location. So it may be at 15, it may be someplace else. I don't know, Lauren, if you had a different take on that. I think it's a kind of the intent of the section.
Yeah, I would agree with that comment, but I would also add that I believe that's under ordinance 530, which is the Eden Housing Site discussion that had the under Ordinance 530, which is the Eden Housing Site discussion, that had the provisions for the Iron Horse Village, excuse me, Iron Horse Trail fee, as well as the parking, contingent parking obligation. This item is only the CityWalk. Through the consent calendar, the prior one was already adopted.
Yes, yes. I mean, I just, since this is sort of like our final clarification of all the stipulations, I was just wondering if there's a way to make, I don't know. To me, it just sounds like "may enter into" means that one side or the other can object and say, "that's not possible."
Well, the, the item was passed under consent, so that was under 512, not 513. That's, that was the second reading of it, so that's already been approved. I don't believe that there's an avenue for opening that back up again once it's been approved.
Are we, are, so this is from 512? I'm sorry, because I was looking at 513.
Yeah, I was looking at 513 as well, but this is.
13, section 6.11, contingent parking obligations.
Well, the way I read it, it does say that if they may enter into a parking agreement to provide overflow guest parking, but then right after that, it says, "if needed, the developer or its successor in interest shall provide a parking management plan for city review outlining how the concept for off-site guest parking will be administered." So there is, there is a "shall" provision in there, and the way I'm looking at it is that they shall, but it may include the BR 15 solution as well.
Just a thought. So I'll let my fellow council members deliberate that in what they think. That was just something that I was a little worried about, that's all. Interpretation meaning, you know. And at least for the record, I want to make sure that we are clarifying that here today as well, either way.
Staff is clear that the intent is to address any issue that comes along.
It's not for the staff, it's for the public and for the developer.
But, okay. We would enforce anything, so we'd be the oversight.
Councilmember Adler.
Well, I'm, I'm glad we made the changes at the last meeting that we did and added some improvements for the trail and for the parking. So as long as, I think the wording is good, as long as there's no changes, I'm good with those additions and what we put together.
Okay, councilmember Juinet, thank you very much for sharing your thoughts and your research on this one. We appreciate it. And councilmember Rubio, thank you. Also, councilmember Adler. So in, the key is that when I read that about oversight is being removed, that's really shocking for me. That's not true. As already councilmember Juinet clearly mentioned, how the oversight is going to continue. And always, city council, planning commissioners, they are available for public, for at any day or anytime you need, for any assistance or for any questions. We are here, we, people elected us here so that we are keeping things in transparent, and so that we are always there for their interest, not for someone's interest. So they believe us, they trust us, that's why they voted us and they made us to sit in this chair. And that's, we take very seriously. And we continue to provide this service in the same manner, the expectations that were set for us. So I don't know why there is, something came up as oversight is removed, that's not true. And also transparency, I guarantee on behalf of my council, I know everyone on, in this council, that every one of us are very, very specific about transparency. So I don't have any issues moving forward with this. If you still have any questions, don't hesitate. Reach out to your council members or reach out to Mayor Armstrong. We are always happy to have a conversation. And also town hall meeting, we'll be there, we can have a conversation. But I hope people don't get deceived with false information or misinformation or disinformation shared through social media or other options. Please, reach out, you can hear from, directly from us. With that.
We do need to open the public hearing, so we would need a vote to do that.
Sounds good. And now I open the public comment. Oh, sorry. Open the public comment, yeah, hearing.
Excuse me, so move.
Okay, motion moved by councilmember Rubio and second by Adler. We want to get voting. Okay, open public hearing, motion is passed with yes four, no zero. Now the public comment is open.
The first speaker, Sharad Kathrani.
Thank you for the explanation. And from the deliberation, what you mentioned is like, you all basically took a point that there's a way to appeal. But let me remind, the appeal process in city of San Remo is 15 times higher than every other city. So calling it appeal is actually you're just giving an incorrect information, councilmembers. As well as, now, let's come to the key point, where you said that planning commission and streamlining, all those things are required, the state laws require you to streamlining, but none of the state law, if you look up, requires you to remove the planning commission oversight. And while I'm saying, while everybody mentioned that no oversight is being taken away, the oversight is going to zoning administrators. Zoning administrator meetings are at 3:00 PM in the afternoon. They are not open as open as a planning commission. And there's one person in planning commission, there are five planning commissioners appointed. And right now, if it goes directly to the zoning administrator, you mentioned that this is a practice in the city of San Remo. In the past 15 years, past 15 years, there's not a single, single evidence where planning commission has rejected anything which zoning administrator has passed. So you need to take this into consideration. And if the zoning administrator city is asking planning commission not to be the part of the decision-making process in the very first place, it's showing the distrust on the planning commission. And this is the same planning commission this council has appointed. And this is, this, they're probably dissatisfied with your selection in the planning commission. Previously, just to remind you, when we ran, when I ran a referendum, the thousand-plus resident who had signed a signature for the DMU North, and in the same situation, Sunset Development was one of the party, was the key party. So many of the resident don't trust Sunset Development. And here, these two agreements are specifically with Sunset Development. So city and the 60-plus comments, this is very clear indication that people are not satisfied with the job that the city council is doing. Additionally, I want to remind councilmember Rubio that you have attended the rally against Trump, where you specifically mentioned about the due process. This is the due process which planning commission does, and giving it directly to the zoning administrator, you are doing the same thing which you're opposing in the center, and you are doing the same thing right here. This is not right for you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Susie Ferris-Undercombe. I don't have a card. If you want to speak too. Okay, Jimbalik and staff.
Hello again. The reason I wanted to bring up 512 and 513 was concerns I originally had about a couple issues that come up. In the, in particular case of Eden as an affordable housing facilitator, it seemed to be an open question whether they would be the solution, or perhaps a solution. And that was troubling to me because it leaves the city vulnerable after 10 years to have to have an expense they weren't really expecting. So that didn't sound like perhaps the most solid way fiscally to handle it. And, and so we have to be aware of that, and, and you have 10 years to get it to a solution. And actually, there might be some time for creativity there if you have to, because it seems still to be an open question. And on 532, it seems to exempt Sunset from public hearings. There may be a need for that in certain context of what is absolutely required, but I don't think you want to exclude the public, just in general, to keep track of the issue and make comments, and as things change, they may have more comments to say. And it's always good to go over, bend over backwards and have public comments. So I'm kind of wondering how it serves the public to suggest that Sunset Development won't have to have public hearings on things that we're apparently agreeing to tonight. So I just say that there might be other ways to handle that, to get the public involved so they can express opinions as it goes along, rather than feeling like they're excluded. So there's a couple of things there that bothered me, and I, I think if 512 is already fatal complete, then that might tie into a little bit of other issues that come up. On a secondary issue, when you put a bunch of housing together, and it's affordable or low-end housing, you run the risk of a kind of isolation of that kind of population from the rest of the community. Now, sometimes it ends up in disenfranchisement. You see this happening all the time in big cities, after they are maturing, then there's always seems to be a segment of the city that is poor and is on hard times. So that's why you have to be very careful about making one site of several acres just a low-income, some kind of site. You have to be very careful about that. And that would mean making it compatible and attractive for, for the setting it's in with other communities. So it's not looking in stark contrast, and it doesn't feel notably different from the community around it. I think that would take a little work, but it might not be that expensive to do that. So I think that's a long-term thing to look at and kind of resolve it, so it's integrated into the city, and that's, you have time to do that. So I think that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Susie Ferris-Undercombe. No? Okay, thank you. That was the last speaker card.
Thank you. So I'll, at this point, we need to close the public hearing. Any motion?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Let's go for voting. Okay, and close the public hearing. Yes four, no zero. Okay, with that, let's open a conversation. Any deliberation on this, councilmembers? Any comments? No comments?
I, I just wish that the public comment had more facts, not conjecture. I don't see how the standard is, well, I have to, I have to cite rule and law, and public comment can just say, "well, I don't feel like it. It's not right." So I, I don't know, this was, we heard the public, we pulled the, we pulled the item, and I really didn't hear anything that really moved me. And I really tried hard. And it's just, it's just one of those things where you ask us to hear, you ask us to listen, we do, and, you know, it, it's a lot of work up here. And for just to come back over here and just have, just conjecture and, and, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm so irritated that I had to read all this, because it was just, it really bothers me that, that I have to sit here and get a dress down from someone in the public that really has no idea what they're talking about. And I'm really bothered by it. So if the public wishes to say something, please bring something up that's educational and factual, not, oh, it's not right. Doesn't work that way. Come up with something better, a better argument. We did exactly what you asked us to do. We pulled it, we listened, nothing. I'm talking. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Sure.
Madam, please.
Thank you. Good. Thank you.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, vice council. Thank you, councilmember Juinet. Any other councilmembers want to comment?
I, I just want to say, I, well, first, that I appreciate the extensive information and layout that councilmember Juinet provided here for the public today. He really went through, out of his way to provide factual information, not his opinion, not his interpretation. And like him, many of, many of us work very hard, pretty much on a volunteer basis, because we care about our community. We live here, we care just as much as you. We have equal investment in this community like everybody else. And it's extremely hurtful and illegal to actually point out councilmembers and say that they said this, they said that, when they haven't. That's defamation of character. And people don't realize that when you lie about someone, there's laws that protect people from those accusations, and that includes elected officials. Sometimes people think I can just say whatever I want. No, you can't. You have a responsibility to be honest. And I feel very hurt that we've had incredible ratings year in, year out from our community. We reach out for feedback every year to find out how the, how our community is feeling, and someone for selfish reasons is going out there to intentionally spew distrust, when there is no such thing like that happening. And it just is very sad. We're living in a time when so many people are living with so much uncertainty, and the last thing they need is someone to spew lies. That has to stop. Thank you.
Do you have any comments, councilmember Adler?
I'm, you know, just my comment about, about the below-market housing. My understanding, and there was a comment made, that it might stand out and not be up to the, up to the grade of other public housing. I don't think that's the case at all. I think we're going to be very happy with the below-market housing. I, you know, I lived in below-market housing in Palo Alto many years ago, and most people don't even know that was below-market, because, you know, it's, it's more inexpensive, but people are people, they got jobs, they want to take care of their property, and I have no concern that it's going to be a negative thing, and we're going to have weeds blowing around and everything. I think we're going to be very proud of the fact that we have seniors and young people who may not have been able to afford to live here, and now they will be. And I think they're going to be proud of our housing that they are going to live in. So I don't have any concern, but if it ever becomes a concern, I certainly will listen, but I don't expect it to happen. Thank you.
Thanks, councilmembers. After all the explanation that councilmember Juinet gave it to us in this meeting, and then I still hear that, I heard that 532 excludes Sunset from public hearing, that's so disappointing, that how, after all the explanation given, but still come back and make such comment. If still there is a question, don't hesitate, please reach out to us, but please listen what we are explaining here, because city runs by law, not by opinions. And also, as And also, as Councilmember Adler mentioned, that about affordable housing, it's very important for us, for the city. We are proud that we are bringing some amazing, exceptional, affordable housing into our city. And you do remember that Eden Housing, the head of that member she presented. And also, we are planning in future to have further presentations. So please join that meeting and hope that will give you some positive mindset on that. So it's, we all are working as a community together. So hope you understand what we are trying to achieve here. And hope, I hope that we stop misinformation and disinformation spewing into the community. So thanks. That's my comments on that. And do we need to move? Any motion on this one?
Yes, we need a, we need a motion and then to read the two ordinances by title only.
Okay, is any council member would like to?
I move to. You want me to read it?
Yeah.
Sure, I move to enter five point one three.
Ordinance five thirty.
Ordinance five thirty-one. Adopting Amendment number two to the CityWalk Development Agreement regarding Bishop Ranch Parcel One A, DAA two zero two five dash zero zero one. Ordinance five thirty-two, adopting Amendment number three to the CityWalk Development Agreement regarding Bishop Ranch Parcel Three A, DA two zero two five dash zero 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 two.
I will second that.
Yeah, let's go for a roll call or voting. Okay, the motion passed with yes, four, no, zero, abstain, zero, no vote, one. Thank you. With that, let's go to item eight, unfinished business, there's none. So we are going to item nine, new business, nine point one. Public hearing, ordinance, next in line, amending Title B Regulation Division B six, Health Sanitation and Environmental Quality. Chapter one, Solid Waste and Recycling. Article two, Solid Waste, Organic Materials and Recyclable Materials, Collection Services and Containers. And Article three, Authorized Collectors of the San Ramon Municipal Code. Introduce in, okay, by staff report by Martin of City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, and good evening, council members. This is essentially a cleanup of our solid waste ordinance. We've got two specific items at issue here. The first is section B six dash two, which regards self-haulers or those people that that haul waste materials themselves to various facilities. The ordinance currently says that they can self-haul if they follow all the pertinent rules and regulations, both on local and state level. But just because you self-haul some or all of your solid waste, that doesn't mean that you are exempt from the requirement to to subscribe to a service. So that, but that's not made clear. It's not explicit in our ordinance. And the ordinance is now going to change that to make that explicit, that in order to get exempt from having to subscribe to a service, you need to meet certain criteria, which are already laid out in the ordinance. And you need to apply for a waiver from, from city. And and then at that point, you can do your own self-hauling. But you have to meet those criteria. Secondly, and maybe this one isn't quite as simple as that, is that as you might recall, the city council did approve a franchise agreement with Alameda County Industries, which is ACI, which we refer to as ACI here. That was back in twenty eighteen. That agreement included ACI paying the city a franchise fee to cover the costs in administrating the contract for the waste collection services. And at that time, the franchise fee was set at a certain percentage of ACI's gross revenue. The problem is that this method does not accurately reflect what the actual costs are for the city to administer the, the the contract. So the only way to do that would be to hire a consultant to perform a cost analysis of all of the contract management activities undertaken by city staff and then calculate the annual cost of those activities and then divide the cost fairly and equitably amongst the ratepayers. Now, this is not an additional cost to the ratepayers because they're already paying the franchise fee through, you know, through the, through their, through their monthly rates. But it's just a re, it's just a different way of calculating that. So the new rate will now reflect the actual cost of providing the services. And the city and ACI will adjust their waste collection rates the way they do on an annual basis already. And the new ordinance allows the council to adjust the franchise fee as needed without being tied to a preset percentage. And that will allow the council to account for changes in operating, operating expenses or changes in the law that dictate how those operating expenses are to be calculated. That would be without having to change the ordinance each and every year. So it's pretty much just a question of flexibility to adjust to changing times and 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 being able to do that in the simplest way possible. That's all I have, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, council members?
Yeah, Martin, Martin. I know we're going to, are we currently using the R three consulting group? Is that something that's ongoing right now?
We have engaged R three to help us calculate the operating costs, the management costs.
Is that something we would continue to do? Or we get kind of get a handle on it now and and use that recommendation? Or we, we need to yearly kind of update that process?
I anticipate that we would be using them on a yearly basis or someone like them.
Okay. Well, I, I like, I like what we're doing because I, I think actual cost is what we need. And, you know, I think, I think this is going to be more accurate and better for the city. So thank you.
Martin, I just have a quick question. Definition of self-haul, I know what it, what it means when it, when it's read. But could you elaborate what that, what, what, what that means exactly?
Well, essentially, it's, it is a defined term in the code. And it, but it, it's essentially anyone who has, who generates waste materials on their own property and does not have them, takes those materials themselves to the
Oh, I see.
Facilities.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Think she knows.
You can fill out a speaker card?
Yes, question.
Yeah, Councilmember Rubio, any questions?
So, no, I mean, so, I mean, I, I agree with Councilmember Adler. I think it's just better to have actual numbers so that we stay true to costs. Has historically there been a lot of variance as far as, you know?
You know, I, I don't know the answer to that question, but we'll know more when we get a final report back from R three.
Oh, that, yes. And that, that's another thing. So we'll be able to actually see year in, year out and sort of figure out some of the, like, what may drive some of those costs to go up and down.
Yes.
Perfect. Well, thank you.
Okay, with that, let's open a public hearing. Anyone entertain for open motion?
I move to, I move to open the public hearing.
One second.
Okay, the motion passed for open public hearing. At this point, we open public hearing.
Bless you.
Only one speaker. Okay.
Just make sure they know that it has to be on the item.
Yep.
Okay.
I have a clarification question. I want to understand if you're talking about landlords being able to dispose of the waste that they have on their property or if you're talking about residents themselves. Attorney?
Can you please direct your comments here to the council? Then we can request the staff as required.
Oh, I didn't know that I had to.
Yeah, please.
You're asking me to?
No, you already asked the question, so we will request our staff to answer.
I was just wondering if it was illegal for me to do it that way or if you just wanted me to do it that way.
No, you can pose the questions.
And I can pose it to him if he made the, am I not allowed to pose a question to him?
No, you can pose questions to the council and then we can add.
So, so it's okay for me to ask the question that I did?
To us. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to move forward. We don't want to waste my time.
Okay, so do you want to answer that, Martin?
So I believe the question was whether landlords specifically are allowed to to self-haul?
Are you talking about the landlords being able to self-haul? Or is this?
Property owners in general are.
Property owners in general.
Under, under specific circumstances.
What about when it has to do with hazardous material, counsel?
The same, please, Martin, go ahead.
Hazardous materials
Like mold.
Typically come under a different category. And frankly, I'm, I'm, I'm not familiar with anything of hazardous materials.
Okay, so I wanted to pose this question because it directly affects my family and the comments that I was making earlier. There is illegal dumping of mold and hazardous material into the trash bins at Canyon Village Apartments. That can contaminate not just our waterways, but it can contaminate anything else that it touches. It's right next to our Safeway. We want to make sure that our food is taken care of. We want to make sure that the children, that the dogs walking by, that anyone that is walking by that hazardous material is not hurt. I have documented pictures of the hazardous material that has been dumped. CFI is not certified for mold remediation. They are certified for flooring and they are certified for painting. I have already submitted my complaints to the California State Licensing Board, HUD, the Civil Rights Center, and multiple other organizations. I have filed the federal whistleblower document that I needed to. At this point, I am being retaliated against. I need help from the city council to understand what the rights are and how to protect our city from cross-contamination of mold and airborne mold in the HVAC systems in the luxury apartments in Canyon Village Circle. I would like to make this an item. And I don't know how to, so I would need your, your help to walk me through this because this is my first city council meeting that I've ever attended.
Sure, our staff will follow up on that one.
Okay, I just want to make sure they will because I've emailed the city attorney and the city manager for over two months now, and I have not received not one response. I am representing myself pro se. And so I am legally able to speak with the attorney. I would like a response.
So we, we will follow up, and this is a public comment, we cannot.
It's not a public comment. It has to do with the San Ramon citizens, and I'm coming to as a San Ramon advocate.
Yeah, we got, we understand your concern and we'll definitely help with that.
Okay.
That's our job to make sure that we take care of your issue.
So I just need to know what the next steps are.
The next step is our staff is going to communicate with you and then we'll have the follow-up action items.
Okay, I want to also mention that I am disabled. So I am requesting an ADA advocate.
Sure.
I'm formally doing a reasonable accommodation request for an ADA advocate for any further communication between me, the attorney, the city manager, and anyone else.
Sounds good.
Is there any reason why you're standing behind me? Because I still, I'm, I'm going to walk off. I'm just asking for clarification.
Yeah, that's, that, yeah.
Okay, because no one has asked me to move, but I saw you walking up this way. So I just wanted to make sure that I'm allowed to finish with.
Pass the time, so the meeting moving.
And I'm, and I'm not, and I'm not doing anything more than.
Speak here, please. Yeah.
I am.
Speak to the council, please.
It's hard when he's walking behind me.
Okay, so you are over the time, so.
And I, and I didn't want to go over the time. I stopped when I was supposed to.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, I was just trying to make sure to show you guys the same respect that you guys show us.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any other speaker card?
No, that was the only speaker.
Okay, with that, we can, I would like to move motion for anyone to move the motion to close the public hearing.
So move to close the public hearing?
Sir.
Yeah, let's vote. Okay, the public hearing motion is passed by four. Close, closing the public hearing. Motion is passed by four, zero. With that, any further comments, council members? Any comments on that one?
No.
That's good. I would like to wait till we get that study is done, then we can go from there. So.
I move.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Okay, so I approve, I move to to approve the public hearing ordinance amending Title B, Division B six, Chapter one, Article two, and Article three of the San Ramon Municipal Code.
Anyone want to entertain the second?
May I, may I interject? Does that include continuing the hearing to the next council meeting for approval?
Yes, yes. And set the ordinance for adoption at the September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five city council meeting. My apologies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir.
Yes, we need a second.
Okay, Councilmember Rubio moved and Councilmember Adler second. Okay, the motion passed four, zero. Okay, with that, we go to light number ten. City manager and city council members' comments matters initiated.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. Two quick events to highlight for the community. The first, on September sixteenth at five P M. at the Doherty Station Community Arts Center, there will be an arts summit. It's a chance for the community to learn about the arts programs, share ideas and feedback, and connect with fellow members of the arts community. So we're looking forward to that summit. And then September eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth, on the eighteenth from two P M. to seven P M. And then on September nineteenth and twentieth, from ten A M. to four P M., the Library Foundation is holding the annual mega book sale event. On September twentieth, I believe, in the last few hours of the event, you can fill a bag for ten dollars. So as many books as you can carry, although I encourage you to pay full price. On the other days, I don't want to just highlight that, that last event. But if you do want a good deal, stop by. All proceeds will benefit the San Ramon libraries. And then actually have a third, just very quick update. You may have noticed this evening that we had a change in our screens here in the council chambers. We replaced the old technology, which was a little bit harder to read. And now we have bigger, brighter screens, thanks to the work of the city clerk, our I T department, and also our engineering team for figuring out that we could put projectors in the ceiling instead of having very expensive screens that tend to go out and not display well. So we're very happy with that, as how that turned out. And we are looking forward to making other improvements in the next year or so on the chambers. With that, I have no, no further updates.
Good, council members, who understand? Councilmember Junit?
Yeah, I want to raise a matter initiated. It's, again, the public outreach. And I'm sure fellow council members probably heard the same from the issue with the panhandler. It's not a character in a Batman movie. It's the gentleman that sits on six eighty. And I, my question really is around what And I, my question really is around what, what's the, what's the jurisdiction? Where is that exactly? Because I know most calls come in to CHP or Caltrans and they say, and they probably goes like this. There's a gentleman begging for money. He's on Crow Canyon Road. And the typical answer I would hear or expect is, well, let's call San Ramon and call the police. But I want to understand because I want to educate myself and educate the public as well as to what, what the jurisdiction is and for that, that area around the cloverleaf.
Sure, um, just briefly, speaking only to jurisdiction that is within Caltrans right of way. Caltrans right of way extends almost to San Ramon Valley Boulevard for that whole stretch. So, um, little known fact and maybe people will learn an interesting tidbit about the city this evening. We do not own or operate any of the overpasses or any of the on ramps or off ramps. That includes the signals, the lighting, that is all coordinated with Caltrans. So that is completely within the Caltrans right of way. And we do have a contact with the CHP that we share when people do want to issue a complaint. Now, I understand you can go on the free county mapping app. The issue with that mapping app, no matter where you zoom in within San Ramon boundaries, it will say San Ramon on it. So people will zoom in and go, oh, look, that's San Ramon. It is definitely not within our jurisdiction.
It's good to know. I, I did that. So that map from GIS Caltrans is not.
For the county.
The county, it's not, it's not a legal boundary. It's just.
Right.
Okay, okay, got it. Okay. My next question regarding the panhandle, and this is for our city attorney, Martin, here. My understanding under California law, as far as I know, there has never really been a nascent law passed just to say, hey, no panhandling allowed at all. I know there are aggressive panhandling statutes, but I'm just curious from what, just what is the law related to panhandling?
That, that is correct. Aggressive panhandling typically means either having someone that is soliciting for money in a threatening way or in a, or physically assaulting someone as they're, as they're asking for money. But simply asking someone for money is protected by the First Amendment.
So somebody passively sitting down and putting their money out? Okay.
Yes, now there may be other laws involved, trespassing, et cetera, obstruction of the sidewalk, et cetera. But as far as just simply asking for money.
Okay.
That, that can't be made illegal.
And as far as is there somebody we could call to, to help individuals out that are down on their luck? That maybe notwithstanding this, this individual themselves, I sort of know the backstory. But for animal, uh, there's been complaints that this, this animal's been baking under the sun and thirsty for water. Is outside of calling the police, is there somebody maybe? And I, I don't want to punish these people. I just want to help them.
That would be animal control and that's administered through the county. But I also want to note that anytime our officers make contact with somebody, we always provide options for services. Uh, so if somebody is in need of, of something, there are county programs that we refer them to because that falls under county health and welfare.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you. Sorry, council, I'll be quick here with them. So, um, on August 14th, we had the planning, um, planning commission interviews where we nominated Mr. Max, Max, there you are, Max Zhang, congratulations. On August 20th, um, I attended the opening of the Citizens Academy with Mayor Mark Armstrong. And on August 28th, we had the Library Foundation meeting where the book sales were brought up. Thank you, city manager. And on September 3rd, um, we had the teen council interview. And if anybody really wanted to have a chance of listening in, I think all those teenagers did a fantastic job of, of speaking. Their public comment, their speaking, their presentation skill was, um, it, it really was a tell of the tape for our youth here in San Ramon. So I couldn't be any prouder. So that's it for me, Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Council member Adler.
Sure. On August 20th, um, we did have a, a nice gathering under the rotunda for Debbie Chamberlain to recognize her retirement as community development director. And, uh, and we're fortunate to have Lauren Barr appointed to take over her as her successor. That same day, the art foundation met by Zoom. You know, Gary Albert provided a wrap up on the summer concert series and indicated that we have the Live Well Resource Fair, which will be held on Thursday, September 25th from 11:30 to 4:00 PM at the Al Costa Senior Center. Also discussed an upcoming international film series, which we'll be doing in February on the 20th, I believe, oh, no, February of 2026. And we're, we're going to have a number of international films. I'm going to help moderate some of those films once we decide which ones we're going to use. On August 21st, we had the Contra Costa, uh, central, central Contra Costa Sanitation District meeting. They adopted a resolution to encourage and promote prevention and, uh, gosh, I can't read my own writing, um, having to do with pollution prevention week, uh, which is going to happen on September 15th to 21st. And, um, on August 28th, I was happy to go to Windermere Ranch Middle School. They had a school assembly. They had just started school. And we had an officer there talking about bike and pedestrian safety. And they introduced me at the end and I was happy to encourage the kids to, you know, follow the rules and be safe because they're our most important resource is our kids. So, um, on August 30th, my birthday, actually, we, we had the Grand Ganesh Festival here next to, um, you know, actually it was next to City Center. Fantastic festival. It went on for a long time, but we had, I was honored to be able to, you know, be involved in some of the blessing ceremony that we, the mayor and Vice Mayor and I were up on the stage. And it was just interesting to see the community get together. And it was very festive and enjoyable and happy occasion. So, uh, it was an honor for me to be there. And that's, uh, that's about it. Other than I echo the comments about our teen council selection that we made on chair and vice chair. Those kids are very sharp. And I was kidding. I mean, it was one of the hardest decisions I ever had to make because they're all good and they're all articulate. And we're very fortunate to have these kids who are going to be around for a while. So thanks a lot.
Council member Rubio?
Thank you. So on August 13th, I attended the LAFCO, Contra Costa County LAFCO meeting. The commission approved the annexation of Pennington Fire Protection District to Kensington CSD and dissolution of the Kensington Fire Protection District on July 9th with no protests. We also, um, there was a third round reclamation services and municipal reviews were discussed covering 12 reclamation districts. The commission voted to continue the matter to September 10th, 2025. And then, uh, the commission also discussed various applications and updates to the California LAFCO. Let's see. And we discussed also the special district risk management authority election as well. Then on 8/22, I had the privilege of attending a MUDS tour, which was very interesting. It was a great discussion, learning a little bit about, more about the history and, and just getting to hear feedback from the community. It was, it was a great tour and it was really wonderful to get so much feedback from the community. Then on September 5th, I attended the Contra Costa County Connection and, uh, Operations and Scheduling Committee meeting on September 5th. We basically discussed underground storage tanks in place of closure contract, electric bus updates, which they're going to do some updates to it in terms of to just because there's money basically sitting there and they're either use it or lose it. So they're going to do some updates to make sure they're staying current. And for efficiency purposes, also clever insights contract was discussed. And, uh, we also went over fixed drought report, paratransit and automated driving system project reports. And yes, so that was it. And thank you. I think that was it. Thanks.
Well, most of my items already covered, planning commission interview and then teen council interview. And then on community side, uh, attended Ganesh Festival along with council member Adler and Mayor Armstrong. And then on August 30th, attended Arangretem, that is a dance graduation by our community youth, Bhoomika. Or she's a disciple of our own art advisory committee member, Naina Shastri. So that was a fantastic performance. And then on September 6th, attended Narika. This is our president of Narika is from our San Ramon community, Shailajadikshit. I attended along with council member Rubio for their gala fundraiser. So, um, thanks to Narika for all your efforts and services to our community to fight against domestic violence and bringing awareness in our community. So those are my items. That's pretty much. And any final comments?
No, no, I just wanted to add, echo, and thank you for reminding me, Narika was just this Sunday. Everything flies by, time flies by. But I just wanted to echo what was said earlier about all the applicants for teen council, vice chair and chair, they were all stellar. I mean, um, it was, it was a hard choice, but I'm very glad with the people we have and looking forward to all the great work they will do. Thank you.